West of the applicant for withdrawal of the application and I have a letter to that effect. She's hand delivered to Brian. It's dated September 2nd. Dear Mr. Curry, I am writing to you in my capacity as a director of Wall Management Corporation, quotes "Wall", the potential developer of the property commonly known as Elm Arch Inn located at 26 Elm Archway, Falmouth, Massachusetts. Please let this letter serve as a formal request to withdraw Wall's application for site plan review by the planning board without prejudice. And it is signed, David Wall. So I need motion?
I move that we accept the withdrawal?
I'll second.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice?
Second.
Seconded. That we accept Mr. Wall's request to withdraw without prejudice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, state. Next on the agenda, the applicant is DeDario Enterprises LLC. Site plan review and special permit to construct a 14,718 square foot pharmacy building on 2.84 acres located at 419 East Falmouth Highway with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. And to that effect, we do have a couple of motions here. So before there would be further discussion, which we did have plenty of, I'd like somebody to make the motion and then we will have discussion on the proposed motion. And the first one is for the motion for site plan review. Do everybody jump? I want somebody to read it, please.
September 16th, 2014, DeDario Enterprises draft motion that the planning board vote to approve the application to DeDario Enterprises LLC under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw to raise one of the existing commercial buildings and construct a new structure for retail sales and pharmacy use, 14,718 plus or minus square feet located at 419 East Falmouth Highway, also shown on assessors map, 33, Section 18, Passeau 17, Lot 0, and as depicted on plans entitled. A, Site Plan Prepared for DeDario Enterprises LLC Prepared by Holmes McGrath Inc., dated March 14th, 2014, Revised August 22nd, 2014, Scale 1" = 20ft. Sheets 1 through 6 are supported by a stormwater management report dated June 11th, 2014. B, Planting Plan, CVS-Davisville Road Prepared by Perucci Solian Landscape Architects, dated July 22nd, 2014, Scale 1" = 20ft. C, CVS Pharmacy Exterior Elevations Prepared by BKA Architects, dated March 20th, 2014, Revised August 24th, 2014, Scale 1/8" = 1ft. Findings: The applicant proposes to redevelop a portion of the property located at the corner of East Falmouth Highway and Davisville Road. Proposal will reduce the total lot coverage by structures and paving from 74.9% to 71%. This redevelopment requires review by the planning board under Article 39. Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for design details concerning parking, landscaping, drainage, lighting, utilities, and other aspects of site design. The proposed use of the property also requires a special permit under Section 240-51A-11A for new construction of retail sales over 7,000 square feet gross floor area, GFA. The board will decide each application accordingly. Under Site Plan Review, the board finds the plans conform to the dimensional requirements of zoning bylaw concerning building setbacks and heights. The site is in the Coastal Pond, Olay District for Barnes Pond. However, the proposed building will result in a net reduction of 2,792 square feet, therefore no nitrogen mitigation is required. Except as condition below, the board finds the application satisfies Article 22 parking requirements of the zoning bylaw, including the number and location of off-street parking and loading spaces, aisle widths, and the design of the drive-through facilities. Article 23 Performance Requirements of the zoning bylaw include, including nuisance, sign design, and stormwater management, and Article 25 landscape, or 24 landscape requirements. Conditions: One, pavement markings shall be installed to direct drivers through the one-way traffic pattern at the drive-through. All pavement markings and signs for traffic control shall be maintained in good condition. Two, all landscaping shall be maintained in good condition as per the plans cited above. Three, pedestrian paths through the landscaped area shall be provided with low-level lighting fixtures attached to pallet-style fixtures. Whole lighting for the parking area shall be designed as downlighting or box lighting, so-called, so as not to spill over adjacent property lines. Four, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-18, 183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain a curb-opening permit from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division for the entrance on Davisville Road. Furthermore, the applicant shall obtain a curb-opening permit from Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the entrance on East Falmouth Highway. All work performed within the public right of way should be conducted under this direction of the town engineer.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Now, discussion on this site plan review. Is there any discussion on? Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Yes, sir.
Is there a bit of signage missing? It said trucks only entering here. I can't hear. So is there signage missing on that?
Entering that truck loading zone? It was going to say trucks only.
Probably figured out. Stop sign. Says stop sign, right? It's going to be... If you're exiting, it says stop sign? Is that what you mean?
Where should it be?
Well, going behind the building to the dumpster area? That's just for trucks only. Maybe it's on a different...
Well, it should be on your plan, your site plan. So what you can do... Stop sign. If you want, you can condition your decision. Just add that to your motion. Trucks only sign to the Davisville, to the entrance of the facility there on Davisville Curve Cut.
Okay.
You just need that to make the motion. So maybe under condition number one, you said pavement marking shall be installed to direct drivers. Under condition one, you may want to add in a trucks only signage for the service area in the back of the building.
Sound okay?
Did you want me to add?
Trucks only after...
Loading zone or trucks only?
I thought I was going to have a do not enter sign, so that way they wouldn't drive straight in. That would take care of your trucks.
Right.
Right?
Well, except for...
Well, it'd be the trucks, you know.
You don't want to confuse the truck driver.
I mean, they're trucks, so...
Deliveries only, trucks only.
Right, no through traffic.
Right. Some signage to give the public an idea of they're not supposed to drive through here.
What's the best way to word that?
I think your condition is fine and I'll just work with the town engineer. This is a uniform manual for traffic control signage. And I know the board's intent and we'll get the right type of sign up there that's needed.
Okay.
So how do we want to amend the motion?
Under condition number one?
Right.
You just want to add signage of trucks only, no through traffic at the, to the entrance of the service area in the back of the building.
Okay, and I don't write fast enough, so you all understand that and Brian will amend the written.
Yep.
Is there anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. And there has been an amendment that wasn't moved, but we should have a motion to amend that.
I would second his amendment.
Okay.
Doug's amendment, I would second the amendment.
Okay, so it's been moved, the amendment has been moved and seconded. So let us vote on that now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, state. And now we can go back to the original motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, state. All right, so that is passed. Now, we have the second portion of this procedure, which is the request for a special permit. And I need somebody to read that motion.
I'm on the roll, so...
Go ahead, Dan.
Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application to DeDario Enterprises LLC and grant a special permit pursuant to Section 240-51A-11A of the zoning bylaw in order to raise the existing building and construct a building for retail sales and pharmacy use, 14,718 plus or minus square feet located at 419 East Falmouth Highway, also shown on assessors map, 33, Section 18, Passeau 17, Lot 0. Findings: A special permit granting authority shall grant a special permit only upon its written determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. The determination shall indicate and shall include consideration of each of the following. A, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. Planning board finds the size of the site adequate. Minimum lot size in a business two zoning district is 20,000 square feet. Site contains 2.84 plus or minus acres. Forty percent of the lot may be covered by structures. The proposal will utilize 26% of the lot covered for structures. Total lot coverage is a lot of 70%. However, currently 74.9% of the site is covered by existing buildings and pavement. The proposal will reduce the existing lot coverage non-conformity to 71%. The planning board is authorized to allow the lot coverage above 70% under by law Section 240, 69D as applied for by the applicant. Board finds that the criteria for a special permit under that section have been met by the applicant's filings, including a traffic memorandum prepared by Benes, Hangan, Ruston, Rustlin, Inc., dated February 24th, 2014, showing the average daily summer trip generation not exceeding four trips per lineal foot of lot coverage in a stormwater management report dated June 11th, 2014, submitted by Rob Lizardi Rivera, P.E., showing the increase in stormwater alarm. B, suitability of the site for the proposed use. The planning board finds the site suitable for the proposed uses. The zoning is business two, which allows retail sales and services both by right and special permit. The surrounding land uses are primarily retail sales and services. The ways serving the site are part of the state highway system or principal roadways of the town. The intersection is signalized and is proposed for new advanced traffic control equipment as part of an upgrade proposed by the state. Plans for the site have been integrated into this intersection upgrade. C, impact on traffic flow and safety. The board finds the impact on traffic flow and safety to be acceptable. No new curb openings will be constructed and the proposal will relocate the Davisville Road curb cuts at it is the maximum distance possible from the intersection. The board is aware that during summer months, the volume of traffic in this area results in significant left turn movement delays along East Falmouth Highway. However, these delays can be expected under no build, future, and build conditions. With the relocation of the Davisville Road curb cut, the reconstruction of the intersection and the net reduction in floor space, the board finds that there will be no net increase in traffic-related impacts over existing conditions. D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. The planning board finds no impact on the neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. The buildings and landscaping proposed by the applicant will be in improvement over what currently exists today on the site. There are no significant views or vistas being affected by the height allocation of the buildings. The board finds the proposed conditions to be superior over what currently exists on or other nearby possels with retail uses. E, adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. Board finds the method of sewage disposal, source of water, both potable and for fire suppression and the drainage, stormwater management for the project to be adequate. The plan's driveway widths have been modified per the referral from the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department. The site will utilize an onsite sewage disposal system. The Department of Public Works maintains town water in the area. E, adequacy of utilities and other public services. The board finds these to be adequate. The site is served by power and telephone utilities and adjacent to other public services, including cable and internet connections. G, the effect on the proposed project on the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town. The planning board finds no effect on supply of affordable housing in the town. H, the decision of the planning board under Article 39, Site Plan Review, the decision of the planning board under Article 39, Site Plan Review, dated September 16th, 2014, will be incorporated and made part of this decision in its entirety, including but not limited to the plans cited and conditions imposed. I, compliance with all applicable sections of the zoning bylaws, including but not limited to all performance requirements under Articles 22 and 24. The planning board finds compliance with the applicable sections 240-51A-11A of the zoning bylaw and with the incorporation of the planning board's decision under Article 39, Site Plan Review, all performance requirements under Article 22 to Article 24. Therefore, given the above, the planning board finds the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter and that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions: One, the decision of the planning board under Article 39, Site Plan Review, dated September 16th, 2014, for DeDario Enterprises LLC, as a letter to Building Commissioner and Tatchia Two, is hereby adopted and made part of this decision in its entirety, including but not limited to plans cited for approval and conditions one through five imposed herein. Two, pursuant to Section 240-221 of the zoning bylaw, this special permit shall lapse two years from the date it is granted if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Unless approval? All right, no discussion, no questions?
Everything's on the landscape plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, applicant GSTV S LLC, special permit modification to allow for storage of non-agricultural equipment and materials at the existing commercial nursery located at 25 Crocker Road, East Falmouth, BSS Design. And we have a proposed decision. Can I have somebody read it?
September 9th, 2014. Motion that the planning board vote to deny the application of GSTV S LLC, Inc., for the new special permit to modify the existing special permit granted by this board on September 8th, 2004, under 240-38M of the zoning bylaw, for the property located at 25 Crocker Road and shown on plan as plan of land prepared for GSTV S LLC, 25 Crocker Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared by BSS Design at a scale of 1" = 60ft, dated May 23rd, 2014, and revised July 17th, 2014, with the following findings. In 2014, the applicant applied for it and was granted a special permit by the planning board under 240-38M of the zoning bylaws to store non-agricultural materials at what was then an existing 7.4-acre commercial nursery located at 25 Crocker Road in East Falmouth. The commercial nursery operation was a by right permitted principal use within agricultural A-zone district. Through the special permit, the applicant was allowed to devote the eastern 1.2 acres of the lot on storage, for storage of non-agricultural materials. These materials included stone and other landscaping products that the board found to be previously accessory to the then commercial nursery in operation. No vehicle storage was allowed by the 2004 permit, special permit, and the eight roll-off containers were not allowed as part of the board's decision. The current application seeks to modify the existing special permit for the eastern 1.2 acres and seeks a special permit for the property in order to allow for these new storage areas for non-agricultural materials and equipment marked tenant area A, B, and C as per the plans cited above. Vehicle equipment and materials lists were provided to the board for each of the tenants' areas pursuant to the letter dated July 1st, 2014, from applicant's attorney. The planning board opened its public hearing on the application on July 8th, 2014, and visited the site as a quorum at its duly posted meeting on July 31st, 2014. At the July 8th hearing of the planning board, they received verbal communication regarding the merits of this application, including testimony on the current operations and evidence of the site that has been used beyond the scope of the 2004 permit. The planning board does not have enforcement authority over these decisions. This role is the role of the planning commissioner, building commissioner, the Board of Appeals, and the courts. The board makes no findings regards to the past use of the site. The board will focus on the current petition and will address the applicant's request for each of the areas accordingly. The board closed its hearing on July 26th, 2014.
August?
August, excuse me, 26th, 2014, and took the matter under advisement. At its meeting of September 2nd, 2014, the board discussed the application materials, public comments, site visits, and site visit experience. Based on the above, the board finds the following. Under Section 240-38M, the planning board may grant a special permit to the owner of any lots not under the Water Resource Protection District, any portion of which is included in the agricultural use for commercial nursery operations. The board finds that no portion of the lots are in agricultural use for commercial nursery operations based on the applicant's own testimony and given that the only evidence submitted to the board of any commercial activity was an invoice dated May 1st, 2012, over two years ago, for less than $7,500 to a company that alleged, that is alleged to currently occupy the site. Failing this threshold question, the board has no choice but to decline to issue the special permit. Secondly, even if the board was inclined to find these thresholds excess, the board finds that none of the requested vehicle equipment or materials to be stored included on the July 1st, 2014 letter were previously accessory to the supposed existing commercial nursery operation. The special permit is to be issued to the owner of the lots for the benefit of the agriculture use for the commercial nursery operation. It is not intended for tenants to have, tenants that have no previous relationship to the owner's commercial nursery operation as petitioned here in this application. The board finds that this petition, for all practical purposes, is an application for the planning board, is an application the planning board can only consider under Section 240-38K for a contractor's yard special permit. And that application is not eligible for, as nowhere in Section 240-38M does the term contractor's yard appear.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, discussion on this decision.
Just a question. We are, are we leaving in place the original special permit?
Yes. We're not, we were being asked...
To modify.
To modify and to give a new special permit.
But the old one's still there.
The old one is still in place. Okay. The conditions are still in place of the old permit. Okay? Anybody else? Any questions? All in favor of this decision to not allow? So in other words, a positive vote is a negative...
To deny.
To deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, state.
Gentleman has a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate?
Well, I don't, it's not testimony.
No, there's a question.
As to what? The meaning of what we just did?
Orders?
I, perhaps you may tell me that I could ask one of you afterwards?
Or ask Brian, I think, would be more appropriate, if you have a question on the decision.
Afterwards?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, rather than...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Loser of order, that's all.
Yeah, well, hearing closed, the decision is taken.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. We move on to general correspondence. And we have a couple of items here. We have a Cape Cod Hearing Notice of the Water Quality Management Plan. This is a revised hearing notice, Cape Cod Commission. It's going to be a series of public hearings that will be conducted on water quality and there are different venues that this will take place on. And rather than reading this rather complex thing, I would suggest that if you are interested in it, you go into the planning office and see. I think there was some interest on the original notice. And the second one is an invitation that we need to consider as to whether just individual members of the board want to go or whether there are sufficient members of the board that we will need to announce this as a public meeting if we have a quorum. And so I will continue with what I'm talking about now that you know the parameters here. The letter is an invitation, excuse me, from Sylvie Shulkin, Chair, Roundtable Planning Subcommittee. She says, "I am writing to you on behalf of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee's Roundtable Planning Subcommittee to invite you to be an honored guest at a public discussion of our town's current and projected housing needs. The event, known as the Housing Roundtable, will take place on Tuesday, October 1st, 2014, in the Herman Foundation Meeting Room on the ground floor of the Falmouth Public Library on Main Street. The meeting will begin at 7:00 p.m. and conclude at or about 9:00 p.m. The roundtable event is cosponsored by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee, the Falmouth Economic and Industrial Commission, and the Falmouth Housing Trust. The event will cap a study by RKG Associates, a consultant hired by the town of Falmouth, to research the current and projected housing needs of the town across all demographic and income levels. The consultant's report will be available on the Falmouth Town website in mid-September. Judy Barrett, RKG's lead investigator for the housing needs study, will give a keynote address summarizing the report's findings and their potential significance for Falmouth's economic and cultural vitality. As an honored guest, you will have an opportunity to ask Ms. Barrett questions and to comment on any aspect of the housing study that particularly interests you. All participants in the event will be encouraged to think about prospective uses for the consultant's report. We hope that the housing needs... We hope that the housing needs study will jumpstart an ongoing public conversation on housing and its relationship to the future of Falmouth. We would be honored if you would attend the roundtable. We would also be appreciative if you would urge the members of your board to attend the event, kindly respond as soon as possible to this invitation by email or phone, but no later than September 17. That's tomorrow. I look forward to hearing from you." I know I fully intend to attend that event, and I'd like to get a sense of whether other board members will, yes, can.
Well, I want to ask that it happens to be on a Tuesday. Is there going to be any...
No.
Required meeting that Tuesday?
No, we will not have a meeting that day. Okay, a planning board meeting.
That's October 14th?
October 1st.
It's two weeks from today.
Yeah, so, yes, Ralph.
Right, I'm the planning board representative to this community, this community action committee, advisory committee on this particular study. I will be there.
Okay, so that's two of us.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, October 1 is a Wednesday.
There's no meeting.
But we're not having a Tuesday meeting. Okay, now, that's straight. I don't have a calendar, pardon me for that, but...
Well, it says Tuesday in the letter, that's why.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's what...
Oops.
Being a Wednesday, I will not be able to attend. That's why I thought it was, I was like, oh, that's good.
Confused me as well.
I will not be able to attend.
And it also refers to the Falmouth Economic and Industrial Commission, and it's a corporation, not a commission.
Well, okay.
Just, there's a couple.
Okay.
I was wondering what they were referring to.
The question really is whether Brian has to, not only how many that they can plan on, but whether Brian has to...
I'm probably going to go, so that might do it.
Announce this as a majority of the board, and therefore, it has to be posted.
They've invited you as a board.
I know.
So, just to clarify, you can go as a board. But as a quorum, discuss this for it as a board, if four individual members happen to just show up, we'll just don't discuss them as judges. But they've invited you to be there as the planning board.
Right. And remember, at the joint meeting with the selectmen, Judy is going to present the report. So, we will have that presentation at our joint meeting on the 23rd.
The meeting is before the discussion.
Absolutely, yes. So, we'll have a bit of time to digest the contents of it. The roundtable discussion is for the community.
But the joint meeting with selectmen is on September 23, right?
Before this roundtable.
Before the discussion.
Yes. Okay. Well, so far, we've got, what, two people definitely going to it?
Rob City's going, right?
Yeah, are you going?
He's not going as well.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand you were going. Okay, so there are three of us going. So, we're fine at that point. So, that's the general correspondence then. Committee reports. Anybody have committee reports? Ralph?
Well, the Community Preservation Committee is developing its articles for town, for town meeting, and there will be eleven proposals that will be presented to town meeting for their approval for various sums of money.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes?
The EDIC is moving, will be, hopefully be finishing work on both, on two major projects the, we'll be bringing forward if we're successful in our negotiations, the bus station renovation project with the state, and the landfill reuse. Both things are, the final reports all being done, and both projects are coming to the point we'll be bringing them forward very shortly.
Okay.
Coastal Pond Management Committee went before selectmen and sought and approved permission to reduce the number of members from nine to seven, and we did add a member, so we're back to a manageable number now, so our, our problems with quorums should be subsiding.
Okay. And the local plan, the LCP Committee, as you know, is going to be presenting two more elements to town meeting. We are not anywhere near ready yet for the housing element. We're starting to incorporate...
You were waiting for this, weren't you?
Yes and no. We were going ahead, but we were waiting for this because we want to incorporate a lot of what's in this report, or to the extent that we can, in the element, and there's no way we could have gotten it ready for the fall town meeting. But we have moved ahead, so we're well along on our way on it. Okay? Anybody else have, okay. That concludes committee reports. Future agenda items that people would like to see on the agenda? Okay, next meeting is September 23. That is the joint meeting, and at this point, we are planning to meet at 7 o'clock. That is when the selectmen can meet, so please make note of that, rather than 6:30. If something comes up that we do have to act on, hopefully it wouldn't take more than five minutes, and we could just squeeze that in and act on it at that point, rather than starting at 6:30 and whittling our thumbs for quite a while. So, remember, that would be at 7 o'clock. And my goodness, 30 minutes almost later, could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
No, we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.